Call meeting order at seven o'clock. Roll call.
Ed Marcus.
Robert Byers.
Sean Arlen.
Randy Snead.
Erica Pardon.
Derek Jones.
Lisa Muni.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on our agenda tonight is nomination of officers.
I would like to nominate Erica Pardon president. I second.
We have a motion as second to nominate Erica Pardon for president. We have any further comments?
I would just ask that, I guess I'd like to ask Erica if she took that position, if she can, with her job. Is it okay?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay Erica, it's up to you to hear.
I read it.
I think this is our first email present.
Vice president, we have to get a vice president.
Alright, nominations for vice president.
I'll nominate Ed Marcus.
Second. Any other nominations? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those against? Ed, you're first president. Alright, appointment of town attorney. No.
I move to retain Derek as town attorney.
Second.
Derek, would you like to be the town attorney?
More than welcome.
All those in favor of Derek being the town attorney?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you sir, I'm the town attorney.
Thank you.
I did. Minutes of twelve twenty-one twenty-four regular session.
I corrected this button.
I move to approve the minutes from twelve twenty-one twenty-two. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Citizen input. Anybody? What about this four off ticket? That was for the last.
I'll hit that in a minute.
Oh, business attorney report.
Um, few things guys, uh, first is this media column, still waiting to hear back from them regarding this lease, and again, this is a six hundred and twelve dollar per year lease, so it's not probably front and center on anybody's radar, but I'll probably reach out to them before the next meeting just to say, hey, where we at? Another issue that we talked about at the last meeting was basically an agreement with Chuck DeWitt to continue on with his services for another ninety days. And I'll be honest, I just got to this, this afternoon, it was even late this afternoon, I sent it to Ed and Lisa, not even the entirety of the council. The agreement's basically the same terms that we've always been operating with, with, with Mr. DeWitt. The way I set it up was based on the first agreement, I think I maybe had the pay scale incorrect. So in the document that I had, it was based on three thousand dollars per quarter, it's only a ninety day term, okay, so it's kind of a, kind of a feeler or temporary term, but it does say three thousand, I looked at the addendum and I realize now that we're basically, we were operating on a, a per quarter basis of two thousand seven hundred and fifty. I've also set it up to be a monthly payment, which would amount to nine sixteen and sixty-seven cents, uh, per month, to be paid by the town. And if you remember, at the last meeting, I think Ed, uh, has been talking to Chuck, but wants to get this kind of off the ground, wants to get this moving, uh, January sixth would be the start date, the end date would be April sixth, so then that's your ninety days. But all of the other terms are the same as what we've had in the past for Chuck. And I appreciate that you're, as a council, saying, I'd rather take a look at this and, review it before we do anything more with it, I appreciate that, and I understand that it is a late, late minute, last minute kind of deal, but I just wanted to get it off my plate and keep it to you guys so it's there for your consideration. I think Ed maybe had a chance to glance it over, look at it, there's a typo that I need to fix as well. My thought is, if the council's so willing to, um, approve the agreement with the modifications, I have to pay at twenty-seven fifty per quarter or nine sixteen sixty-seven cents per month and fix my typo.
I did look at it, it's, it's basically, it is the same contract, other than the, the expiration dates and changing the, the pay. For what, I remember when Chuck was a thousand, I guess I, I forgot that it went to eleven, Lisa caught that, but yes, that's the, or excuse me, eleven thousand a year, but I was thinking a thousand a month, but, other than that, I mean, it, it's the same contract, we've got ninety days, and I mean, at the end of that, then we can either change some terms in it, and if he agrees to it, then fine, if not, then we could.
And in fact, either party, either, either the town or Chuck can terminate the contract with thirty days written notice, so if things really go south, you're really not liking where things are at, um, it's a short contract to begin with, but you can terminate that with thirty days written notice.
Yes, I have, I have a question for Ed if you don't mind.
Sure.
Ed, you, you know, at the last meeting, we, we discussed all those things, um, in our exec session with Chuck, um, we're not gonna bring them out on the table publicly right now, but I know you're aware of everything, that all of our concern, the kind of the direction we wanted to go, you feel we can still do that under the terms of this contract?
Yes, yes, and I think.
Because there was quite a different direction.
There, there was, you are correct. And I, I think we're, we're in a good position, because first of all, I mean, nothing that we've really asked him to do was outside of what that contract said anyway. So I mean, I think this, this gives us some accountability within that first ninety days, and that gives us, you know, either do it, or we go on after the ninety days, so I think that was the whole, that was my intent of moving it to a ninety day contract, rather than extending it, you know, for the whole year and then doing the thirty day termination. I thought the ninety days would give him an effort, or excuse me, an opportunity to show a good, good faith effort that he's going to do that, and I, I think we're, we would be in good shape with that. And I mean, and again, like Derek said, if we get into this forty-five day, sixty day, or, you know, less than sixty days and find out that it's not working, then we can say, hey, you know what? We're, you know, we're not gonna extend it.
Well, that, that's really my only concern really is, is, because I think we all kind of came to the agreement, we kind of went a different direction with that whole apparatus, and.
And I think.
Just wanna make sure that we can move towards that direction and still be within the confines of this contract.
And I believe so, and actually, after, after the meeting, I did have an opportunity to talk to him, I think he's got a better understanding of what the entire council wants, and that's kind of what I, I was hoping to get out of that, was that we all were able to have that input as to what we expected from him, not just me telling him, you know, it was just, and not just my, my feelings or my interpretation, it was just the whole council, so I think, I think we're in a good position for the first ninety days.
Okay, thank you Ed. With that, I'll make the motion then to approve the contract pending corrections that have been stated in this meeting.
I'll second that.
I'm trying to think, do we want to have somebody sign on it, or what, I mean?
I sit up for the signature, the basically, the council president, but I'm clear about the, there's two modifications here, one to change the pay rate, and the other one is to fix the typo that, you know, did, a rushed job and stuff.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 In favor, sorry.
Alright.
Alright, the other thing that I have to talk to you guys about, was at the last meeting, Mr. Boroff came and talked about the ordinance violation ticket, and we talked about the fact that there were photographs, um, and he had filed some kind of a, I'll call it an answer, and I think that's how the court's gonna look at this too. But just to recap, we filed our complaint October sixth of this year, he filed a response, and I made copies of most all this stuff for you guys, so, should be five, take copy and you can pass it on down. And I'm gonna, if it's okay, I'm gonna keep talking, um, as we're, we're passing things down. This was all based on a ticket that was written back on July nineteenth of two thousand twenty-two, we're well within, within a statute of limitations, I think forty-eight-one at that point in time would have been Corey Bowman?
Yeah, he is.
And so, again, here's a copy of the actual ticket that was written. I'll give that to you as well, and it basically talks about, uh, animal, animal waste cleanup slash annoying public. I have not talked to, uh, Corey Bowman to ask him.
I did.
Okay, so you can maybe expand.
I have already extended to the council, my findings from talking to Corey.
Great.
Via email, so everybody is aware of what took place at, when the ticket was written.
Okay, so I don't know the particulars of the win, where it happened, the ticket got delivered to him, whether it was mailed, packed on his door, I don't know. The last thing that I had to give to you folks was the photograph that was given to me at the time when I was given the ticket, said to pursue this, and again, it clearly shows what I believe to be Mr. Boroff, and there's obviously a dog in it's defecating on the sidewalk, I don't know exactly the location here, um, but again, there is that photograph, so there we shall look at. The ordinance violation that we're proceeding on is nine zero point zero two eight, where it does clearly indicate that a owner or agent taking care of an animal, um, has the obligation to basically remove any excrement deposited by the animal on any public or private property. Is there any DNA tech? No, I'm kidding.
The original picture is much clearer than that.
I, and I.
So this is altered, this is doctor.
No, I'm just saying, it is.
What I find, what I find interesting about the photo, just an, an observation of the photo, is that he has a plastic bag and he's picking up other items, but doesn't pick up his, his dog.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, you, you can't carry a little bag to pick up your dog. I see plenty of people doing that, Ed, and some people, ox, people do do that.
Yes.
So that's the information I think that you guys wanted to take a look at, and maybe Sean has a little bit more to expand on that, but.
All I'm gonna say is that the ticket was delivered to his wife, per Corey.
I, in my opinion, I mean, if we're discussing it, if this is the time to discuss it, in my opinion, I think we just let it ride itself, ride itself out, I mean, I think it's a very clear, clear violation, I mean, it's how, he was delivered a copy of the ticket, whether it be to his wife, and he keeps referencing in his response, I'm sure that he didn't write that, and it says, we, 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 so I'm assuming that she would be the we, um, so I have no, I have no desire to, to take any action on it by this board.
In other words, you mean just to move it forward?
Just let it continue as it's.
Process?
Yep.
Okay.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent with Ed, and that's rare, just kidding.
But it is.
It's not, no.
I think it'd be good, guys, yeah, to just put a, a voice vote on this, and that way, I'll have that back.
I move to allow it to proceed through the court as it's going now.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That will do. That was Ed Marrow report.
Thanks sir.
Make a motion to accept attorney report. Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty twenty-four meeting schedule.
We would keep them the same.
Lisa had brought up that, um, because it, it does create a problem, she would like to change meetings to the second, fourth.
It's not my decision, but.
I wouldn't say it was you, Sajad, you said.
For accounting reasons.
For accounting reasons, and sometimes the first of the month falls on the, the Wednesday, so I just feel we, we would be better off if we do it on the second, the fourth.
My only thing is, are there any other meetings on?
Yeah.
Wednesdays.
There are no other meetings on those Wednesdays, um, the only thing that I, I am bringing that up for is, we've always kind of had a policy where, and we do have a resolution, that the clerk is free to pay bills so that they are not late, we can't, I can't do that, but we have had, um, some questions about bills.
And which is paid, it's too late.
And then they were sent out, and so, um, if you don't want that to happen, my suggestion is to move those dates, because every time you, you want a meeting on the first of the month, a lot of times that first, or second, or third is that first Wednesday, and it's very hard to get the packets to you forty-eight hours in advance, close out the last month, bring up the first bills for the fir, you know, the first of that month, and have them to you forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. That's the only reason that.
I move to make the meeting scheduled for town council the second in the last week of the month, seven o'clock on Wednesdays.
Sometimes there are five Wednesdays in a month, half, four times a year.
Second and fourth.
The second, fourth.
Okay, amend that, say second, fourth.
Second.
That's rare.
I would be thinking about that.
Probably know it's completely.
That'd be odd.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, there's three months, I think, three.
And at seven?
Seven.
Seven still? And second meeting, do you still want a workshop at six, in case you need one? Like, or do you want me to put a workshop on every meeting, like publish it? Well, we can't because of the police commission, but, um, do you want the, do you want to set the workshop that is currently set for the second meeting of the month, an hour before the meeting, in case you need one? Otherwise, we have to publish it every time.
Then we could amend it if we need to, because we can always.
You can cancel it?
Or add more.
Easier than you can post one?
Right.
So I'm asking if that's what you want. Sean, do you want to add that to your?
Yeah, I'll, add to my motion, and, one hour before the fourth Wednesday of every month, we can have a possible workshop.
What about leave here?
It is a leave.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's so weird.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Thank you.
Two thoughts, guys, just before we move on, and not to interject, so things that will often, um, I, I think you would need to decide then, are we gonna have a meeting seven days from now, or are we gonna skip to the fourth of this month? The other issue is that I know that we have to publish basically a notice, um, that talks about our regular meeting schedules, and just would remind you to do that, so that's very clear for the public.
Will it screw up current town business if we skip to the last meeting?
To the twenty-fourth?
What about make it effective February first?
Yeah.
There you go.
Or make it effective February first.
Yeah.
Sean, you want it?
Already passed.
That already passed.
Alright, so, February first?
I'll make a motion to make the town council's next meeting February first, twenty twenty-four.
No.
Nope.
No?
The new schedule.
The schedule is change in February.
Make a motion, that our new town council meeting schedule will take place.
Take effect.
Take effect.
February.
February fourth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
My lord.
So moved.
Good job, Sean.
Alright.
That should be one done.
Appointment of utility clerk.
Take a motion to appoint Lisa Mulaney as utility clerk?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to be a utility clerk, thanks. Alright, appointment of development director.
I move to appoint Mark Vanderweil.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks for being a utility clerk.
Be the new development director.
Alright, appointment to the fire territory board.
Make a motion to appoint Ed. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Currently, someone's, uh, moves on to the police.
I'd be willing to, I've been doing that for fourteen years, I'm willing to keep doing it.
That are your.
All those in mine, okay. Sean, please, park board, Bob, welcome to the club.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Uh, utilities, I'll take utilities. redevelopment, Randy?
Never done it, but can give it a try, I guess.
I've never done neither.
I've never done the part before.
And planning and development.
So that would be Chuck and Mark's liaison.
Oh, okay.
So, I just figured, if you kept them both the same, then, because they kind of work together. But if you want to separate them, you can too.
Nope.
Should I add both of them?
No, you have redevelopment.
Okay. Do you want me to take the one with Chuck, just, I mean?
You've been doing it, haven't you?
Yeah, that way we have a, a second backup.
So are you gonna oversee the development as well with Mark?
Oh, I guess, yeah.
Or are we separating?
It, it makes no difference to me.
I don't wanna push too many.
Yeah, it makes no difference to me.
You wanna do that?
We can start out there, we have to, get something valid, you know? If I'm working too.
We're running it.
Don't be bad.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh one power tractor.
Is that supposed to be twenty-four oh one?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Sorry, I know the resolution itself says twenty-four.
My paper.
Make a motion to accept.
No.
Resolution twenty twenty-four oh one power tractor.
Second. I have some questions about it.
Yes.
What is it?
The power.
Jamie?
It's a fuel cost adjustment that, in Boho, is our wholesale power provider, when, when their rates go up, they pass along to us, this keeps it even for us.
For us, as in to?
Buying that power, we pass along to the customer.
Okay.
I was gonna say, not to cut you off, but do we have any idea, I mean, your average customer, what it's gonna affect them?
I, I don't, it's, it's two point seven percent, I think is what they were going up this year, so whatever that amounts to.
What is that at in here?
Power track, it's on the very bottom.
No, I.
The two point seven.
It's got the number in there, I don't think it says.
That, that number's not in there, that's.
Oh.
So the, the, the number is at the back of it?
Zero point zero.
Yeah, this, two point zero one two seven.
Yeah, it's not on the resolution in your packet, though.
It's not? Should be on the.
It's on the appendix, eh?
Oh, gosh, I haven't seen it written.
Well, the, it's not negative, positive. Sometimes it is negative, it has gone down, it went down a lot over the past three years, and now it's coming back up.
I completely missed it, I apologize. Ed, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Other new business?
I have a couple items, I got a phone call this evening from Mr. Keith Ellis, lives at the corner of Indiana and Clinton, he got a letter regarding a ordinance ticket he received. The May of twenty twenty-one ticket? Perfect, I will let him know it's resolved. Thank you ma'am. I think that was it.
I did a couple things.
What's the, what's the couple? Couple's two.
Sorry, you didn't need to turn it off.
I have something for new business, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
I, uh, I would like to see, or have a discussion, councilor, maybe even Derek, I think that for these purposes of reviewing these tickets and doing that, I, I think they should go for some kind of a council appointees, but I don't know how to set that up legally, per se, but I think that, you know, we're dealing with tickets that can be, you know, potentially a couple years old, just because of the way we handle them, or violations and things, I just think it'd be better if we reviewed those with the person in a setting set for that purpose, instead of in front of a, you know, a public forum like this, or that type of a thing.
We, Chief Red, Mark Vanderweil and I are trying to work on a flowchart, basically.
New policy.
You know, a, a new policy on how these tickets are handled in the future. We, um, we've been discussing it, so.
I mean, it should be similar to like, you have the utility review board, or whatever it is.
Exactly, some kind of a review board with people, you know, a member from the council, a member from, you know.
And that'll be the ending, some of this will be taken care of by, after fourteen days, or whatever we come up with, if they're not paid, we're going to send a letter and not wait a year and a half to, to start that process.
I still think for purposes of, pretending ourselves, I think we still should maybe probably work on setting something like that up.
Yeah, I think before it comes, before the whole council and they come in here, they, there should be some process before it gets here.
Is there, is there like a public?
Not necessarily. And I'm happy to sit in on a workshop with you guys and kind of explain what I think, Chief Red could probably talk to you about it more in depth at the workshop, but I, I think, you know, a lot of these tickets are ignored, and I hate to hazard a guess, but my guess is there's several hundred that are probably outstanding, um, that have never been paid, and some of those are probably past the statute of limitations, and they've just gone by the wayside. Um, I do get a handful of them from time to time, move those forward, but I, I think it's fine if you want to set up some kind of a process, and I think that is even more helpful if we ever get in front of the court, like we're going to with Mr. Boroff, to say that we've provided every opportunity to have given a ticket, reached out to have some kind of a board, or whatever you want to call it, meeting or session, however that turns out, um, I, but I'm willing to sit in on that, if that's a workshop agenda at some point.
I'd like to ask the council, maybe that should be one of our, one of our first things, maybe we should try to tackle here, the first part of this year here, is, I, I think we need to put something, I think it just helps these guys put their flow together, you know, I think that's just a missing piece of that whole part of dealing with that.
Not just that, but the code enforcement in general, we need to have a workshop on and go over a lot of, I know there was some stuff that we talked about with codes that didn't really make sense, and, you know, obviously, we need like some type of hearing set up for people to object to their tickets, uh, who does what, when, definitely one of the first workshops we need.
Can we do that on the seventeen, the six?
If that's fine with the rest of the council, I, I just say we need to.
That would be our first.
Where we need to do that.
I, I just, I, I want to see, I've had two phone calls since I took over Monday. Well, I'm down to see.
Assumed office.
And. Both of them, and I'm not blaming any one individual, one ticket was from May of twenty-one, and one, one ticket was from June of twenty-two, I mean, we're dealing with tickets that are over eighteen months old.
Okay, so, before you get all mad about that, I just want to kind of explain what happened, okay, before, we had no recourse to go after these people, you know, we can send them letters, Eric doesn't want to take five hundred tickets to court, okay?
And I get that, and I don't want to see our citizens taken to court.
So anyway, so what, um, what we have done in the past is chosen, not, not chosen, but randomly chosen three or four tickets a year that goes to court so that we can pursue them, okay? About two years ago, we came up with the Trex program, which is a wonderful program that the state of Indiana has, and given us as a tool to collect money for anything that is owed to the municipality. for anything that is owed to the municipality, okay? So the Trex program basically takes, and they say, we have, we have been informed that you owe the town of Argus $100. We are going in, on your state tax return, we are going to take your tax return and give it to the town of Argus, because we diligently did our duty, and we know that you owe us money, and you've never paid it. We have been informed that we can go back on any debt that is owed to the town back to whenever. So in the last year, we went through all of our, actually Lori, um, she's been doing, first she started with the utilities, and she probably brought in $15,000 worth of old utility bills that, you know, people owed to us. And then she started on, um, any other money that was owed to the town for various things, pool fills, you know, things like that. Then she started on the tickets, which were about yay thick. Now, in her opinion, she said, I think that we should send out a letter and let these people try to pay it before we just take their tax returns.
I think that's fair.
Okay, so that's where the letters came from. So we're not just randomly picking people and going, hey, we don't like this guy, we're gonna send him a letter, you know what I mean?
I know that, I know that, I just.
So I'm just saying, this is money that has been owed the town for years. These people ignored these tickets when they got them, and then all of a sudden they want a line because now they've gotten a letter to pay them. So I'm just saying that we now have this tool, and we are going to use it so that we can collect on stuff that we are owed.
I appreciate that clarity, and I just, I think, uh, you know, if you're, if you're given a ticket and, and you owe the debt, you should pay it, but I think that the town needs to in the future somehow act faster, because we're dealing, the, the one ticket that now has been resolved, but the one ticket I brought up tonight was almost 36 months old.
And I understand that, but we didn't get Trex until like two years ago. And we started again with the higher of the, we started with the utility bills, we wanted to see how it would work, you know, and we collected a lot of money off of that. And now, then we went to other things that, you know, companies that owed us much for water fills, you know, um, stuff like that. We went to other debt. Then, now we have gone to the ordinance violations, and we're trying to clean them up. Once we get them cleaned up, we will get a process, we've been discussing it. We will get a process to where, you know, it will be dealt with at the time. But these people still have the mentality of, this is just an ordinance ticket from the town of Argus, and we don't have to pay it.
And they need to at least, when they get it, they need to either pay it or address it.
The ticket that you were talking about, that man was fully aware of that ticket from day one. So he is now complaining because now we're asking him for the money, and now he's complaining. But I took care of it, it's the done deal, and we'll move on.
We could have this workshop at 6:00 PM, then on the 17th.
Yeah, but I just don't want people to think that we are targeting citizens, because we are not. These were legitimate tickets that were written at the time, and instead of taking everybody to court and charging them $300 or $400, we're giving them the opportunity to pay the fine that was due.
Fair enough.
So, but they don't even want to do that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other new business?
Did you have something?
No.
Authorization of payment of budgeted donations.
So these are the American Legion, we discussed these during budget times, um, the Humane Society, and the Council on Aging, and the festival. These were all done at budget, I'm just asking permission to pay them. I know Sean really likes them to come in and give reports.
Oh, man, they just write, if they'll just write us one, I'd be happy with that.
Okay.
If they just write us one, give me a little to you, for us to review, I'm okay with passing it tonight.
Okay.
Pending those things.
That's a motion.
Yeah, as soon as we receive those, we can send it, yeah.
Okay.
But I want to receive those reports first, I just think that's.
Second.
The best thing to do in interest of tax dollars.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Upstaying.
So moved.
I wasn't, I wasn't here, I haven't seen it yet.
Oh.
Well, yeah, but I didn't have to see it. Council on Aging, Humane Society, the Legion, so.
No, they probably the Legion.
They'll have money, it'll be a bending.
Yeah, no.
All right, claims.
Eric, if we have that last one, I forget. So you, you have probably the lowest amount of claims that I could possibly give you. We have exactly three claims on this docket, because again, the first was Monday. So I'm just gonna read the claims, and then I'll give you the total. Um, we have perf, which did not get entered on the last docket, um, it was paid though. And so we have that claim in the amount of $8,571.51. Culligan Water, um, the police department got a reverse osmosis and a water softener, I believe. And so we paid it out of last year's budget, so it was $3,878 total. Um, and then Miracle Recreation, the park board did vote to, uh, pay $40,000 of that. So, um, and it's a $50,000 bill, um, they're getting $10,000 from, uh.
Marshall County Community.
Marshall County Community Foundation as a grant, so that's where that $40,000 came from. So your claims from 12/20 to 12, 12/20/23 to 12/31/23, total $52,449.51. You should be very happy with that.
I make a motion to approve the claims from December 20th, 23, December 31st, 23, in the amount of $52,449.51.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?